Now, I'm doing my own town just so that I could get some more practice. And there's this beautiful sign here. I wish I had a sign like this for my house because I do have a business. That I'm about to stop uh uh for retirement. But what do we have here? Bloomfield Board of Education. Let's go in there and see if they respect. Alright, to record. In we the people's buildings. Public buildings. Uh I see there's like approximately ten cars here. So ten cars are nice. I wonder if they're open or closed for business. Isn't that so? Let's see how they uh um treat the people coming in from the street. There's actually eleven cars here. Oh yeah. There's a uh no, it's only ten. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. For the first time in my life, I'm right. I said ten. That is so funny. Hello there? Hello? Hello? Oh, yes, yes.
Hi!
Yes, um I was out there, I was out there and uh I noticed, I noticed that uh I was getting a little dizzy with the heat. So I said, wow, a public building. Let me go in there and uh get some fresh air.
Okay.
What's your name?
Hi, um I'd appreciate it if you didn't, you're not videoing me, right?
Oh, yes, yes.
No, please don't, please don't.
But why not?
Because I'm asking that you don't. Please don't.
It's just that I'm working on a story.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but you can't come into a a building like this and start filming.
Like this? This is a public building?
Yeah, but.
So I'm the public.
Yeah, so what are you filming for?
Well, I'm doing a story on public building. Well, with this one since I uh as I was walking.
Do you have a card or something? Do you have some identification?
Yes, yes, I do.
Okay, good, can I see it, please?
But I can't because it's a investigative story. So if I tell you what I'm doing here, then I'll trump the story.
Oh, I see, okay, what's your name, sir?
Oh, I wish I could tell you, I'll trump the story, you put it online and they say, oh wow, this is.
My momma, please?
This is he, he in person. Wow, they have a a meeting room here. For the public, let me see if there's any signs here. Oh, boardroom. This is really interesting. Sour Patch Kids. It's like a candy. Wow, look at this artwork here. Wow, whoever made this artwork? Uh it's very creative. Very, very creative. Oh, this is what this is. The Bloomfield Public Schools. And another one of those paintings over there. Ladies and gentlemen, um I don't know if this artwork was made by kids. But they did a good job. I'm hoping that it was made by real kids, cuz if cuz if it was, these kids are talented, ladies and gentlemen. The lady asked me if I needed help, I didn't know if she's trying to get a job. And wanted to help me record. But what the heck do I know? Who did this artwork?
I'm not sure.
Oh, so beautiful. He must have been, or she must have been very creative.
Yeah.
As of to come up with something like this. Oh, this is what this is, the Bloomfield Public Schools. Bloomfield Board of Education. Is that all? Hmm, they do look very nice, I don't see a signature to indicate who drew this. Wow, what a beautiful mess. What a beautiful mess. So folks, as you well seen before, I told the people what I was doing and they uh compromised my story. And uh got very little views. So Home Depot. Vocational Teaching and Learning Building and Grounds Facility. Oh, they got a coffee shop over here. Oh, no smoking. Ladies and gentlemen, in the nineteen seventies, you were allowed to smoke in the post office. You were allowed to smoke in the airplanes. You were allowed to smoke almost anywhere.
That's okay.
Including the city bus.
Okay, okay, bye bye.
How long have you been working here, ma'am?
Um, a minute. I don't care to answer any questions, any personal questions.
It's in your policy to answer your name at least. I don't ask for name, you know, first and last name, I only ask for first name.
Okay, Sally?
Ah, how nice of you.
Thank you.
You came through for we the people. Isn't that something? Oh, restroom over here.
I can't have you go to the bathroom in the building, sir.
Oh, no, no, the the restroom?
Yeah, I can't.
I just wanted to show the. Yeah, I wanted to show the people where the bathrooms are at. When they walk into this public place. But it's okay, it's okay. Oh, they got leaks on the roof. See, that's what I'm here to report. The last building that I was in, um I started asking questions about security. And what happens, a few months later, the boiler blows up. When I was just concerned about the kids at the library. That just goes to show you, folks, oh, water for the people. Now, these machines has been here so long. Wow, hello. This machine has been here so long. And we still use it. Uh you can go by.
Oh, um actually, you have to have a seat out front until someone can be with you, sir. You have to put your name in with an ID in order to get to walk around the building.
Oh, no, I I can't give my name cuz it's an investigative story.
Okay, would you have a seat out front though, so we have someone escort you around the building?
Yeah, yeah, in just a moment, but I was checking out the bathrooms here, so um.
Alright, if you have a seat up front, we'll have someone come help you, okay?
Oh, yeah, I'll I'll be there in about ten minutes.
No, 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 you can't walk around the building, sir. Okay, we're gonna have you go up front?
Well, why not?
Uh cuz we have.
Hi!
Hi, how are you?
You seem friendly.
I am friendly, but do you understand what Chris is telling you that you have to wait up front?
I know, but I'm not law enforcement, I'm actually the law.
Well, I understand, but you still have to wait up front.
But the law says I can wait here.
You you have access to a public building, but you can't.
Hello there, what's your name? I just had the lady in the front, she told me her name, so.
Okay.
I'm supposed to ask for names. That way I don't have to do a public checkup on you guys and yeah, I don't wanna know how much you make.
Come on, we'll come up.
Hello there! She seems pleasant, but she seems like she's peeking. Wow, more artwork? Just abandoned artwork? Wowee, jolly gee. And what's your name, ma'am?
My name is my own business, I'm not employed by the school board.
That's your, oh, you.
I'm a private contractor.
Ah, that is so cool, you don't have to give me your name. Isn't that something? But I think maybe you have to give me your name because uh it's in your policy that when you work for public buildings, for you to give your name, if one of our customers asks.
I believe you were told to wait out front?
Yeah, but um what happens is that I'm I don't need to uh listen to anybody. I'm a free person, a free man. Well, I live freely within, right now, just walking in the front and I felt dizzy, it's so hot out there. So I said, let me go into a public building and there it was. But you know, you don't have to give me your name if you actually don't work for the public.
Hi, sir.
Hi, how are you?
Good, can you walk with me?
Oh, I don't even know your name.
I'm Tracy Youngberg, I'm the superintendent, can you walk with me, sir?
Oh, wha- what is that, a superintendent?
Like the CEO of the organization, do you mind walking with me?
Sure, sure, I'll 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 be out there in about ten more minutes.
Can I have your name?
My name? Oh, I would tell you, but it's an investigative story. And it will be compromised if I tell you my name, you just type it down and jazam.
Okay, do you want to take a walk with me, sir?
Yeah, yeah, in about ten minutes, yeah.
What's gonna happen in ten minutes?
I'm gonna walk with you in ten minutes. Yeah, I gotta take a picture of all this beautiness here. You know, I got this camera for Christmas and I said, wow, let me try it out. Wow, what a cute little dog. He has a last name, Sanchez. Oh, they all have last names. Stanfield. That's pretty cool, you can name your dog with your last name?
Or with whatever last name you choose.
Oh, yeah, well. I think that these dogs belong to uh the people who work here, but what the heck do I know? She's the only one that gave me her name. Oh, you're still here?
I'm here, you want to take a walk with me, sir?
I thought you were gone. You're still here. You're the superintendent, and what is the superintendent, is that the highest rank?
Can you take a walk with me, sir?
Sure.
Thank you.
In about ten minutes, I got, I've got about eight minutes left. You know, time goes fast, plus I have to keep going where I was going, it's just that I got so hot out there. I said, I don't wanna faint. You know, so I said, let me go into this public building to the rescue. And the lady up front was very nice, she understood. Then I said, let me uh do a story on this place. Wow, I've already been here fifteen minutes.
I think there's plenty of time, if you've got enough time here, if you could just take a walk with me up front, that'd be great.
Yeah, wha- what's so great about it?
I'll tell you what, you can sit in our lobby or it's nice and cool.
Oh, but I have to sit down?
Yeah, that would be great, you can sit.
You know, some of our citizens don't wanna sit down, they wanna, they wanna be able to be free. You know, like a free man, a free citizen, a free person. So you did give me your name, but she did not.
Nor does she have to.
Why not?
Is this her workplace, sir? You wanna take a walk with me?
She just told me she doesn't work here, she said.
No, I said I don't work.
Let's, are you, are you avoiding my question?
You wanna take a walk with me, sir?
Are you avoiding my question?
You've avoided mine, I've asked you to take a walk with me three times.
I didn't avoid it, I said I'll be right with you. You know, that's no way to treat important people. Hmm, what's the matter, you don't think I'm important? Oh, boy. Are you gonna both be here long? I know I'm good looking, but. Are you gonna both be here long? I know I'm good looking, but damn, not that good looking. Hi! She locked the door in my face, I didn't do nothing to her. Oh, boy, huh, what is that over there? Uh, I'm not interested in going over there, it seems so cozy that way. So she gave me her name, she gave, she did not give me a name, you're supposed to give your name to any of uh citizens that come here? Oh, another peeker. Another peeker, oh, okay. Oh, that's some other lady. And and what's your name?
You want some water? You said you were hot, you want some water?
Yeah, I'll take a water.
Here, if you come up front.
Ah, no deal.
Come on, deal.
Deal or no deal?
Deal.
No deal.
Deal, come on.
I'll be up front, I'll pick up the water in about eight more minutes. Yeah, I I need eight more minutes.
Eight more minutes?
Yeah, because each video is about thirty minutes.
Now it's thirty cuz when I got here, it was fifteen.
No, I said I did fifteen. Hey, don't go yet, where are you going?
We got water for you, come on.
Yeah, I'll get the water in a minute.
And it's cold there, come on.
You're not about to call the police, are you?
No, but you can get water.
No, she seems, she seems very upset. She seems more curious, she's not upset, she's upset.
She's not upset, she's just asked you to come up front and she wants to come up front.
You're just so full of life.
I'm trying to help you, you said you were hot.
Yeah, well, 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 maybe we want you to be the superintendent.
I'm not qualified.
No, I'm not gonna tell you who I am, but I'm gonna give you a hint. She's listening, I I'm gonna give them a hint. So I don't want her to hear me because then she's gonna know who I am.
I bet you're somebody important, though, I know you are.
Well, yes, uh, I am. Undercover boss, don't tell her.
I'm from the show?
I know, no, no, I know, no, I'm I'm the boss of this place. Yeah, but I didn't wanna tell anybody, but you you're nice, so I tell you. And being that she's in the same room as you, she heard it. But she, you didn't hear when I said who I am, right?
Yeah, she can hear you.
She didn't hear me.
I think she probably did.
Why is she looking outside? Are you waiting for someone, ma'am?
No. This is my office, I'm just making sure you're okay.
No, I feel like she went to call the police or something, that's not right. That's what I felt, but she looks upset, so I felt like she's going to call the police.
She's not upset, she's actually.
She's not calling the police?
I don't know what she's doing.
Oh, wow.
I'll know what I'm doing.
It seems like a conspiracy.
No conspiracy, we just.
Oh, there she is again, do you have a twin sister? I just saw you over there. You didn't call the police, did you?
No, I did not.
Good, because it's no good to call police on guys with a camera. See, this camera means no harm to anyone. I feel like, like, like I'm closed in, I'm not allowed to be free, like a free person.
You can walk right up.
You know that all the citizens of the United States are free people, except for the ones that are in prison, of course.
Yeah, they're not free.
Yeah.
I mean, this space back here is a little bit restricted, but like she said up front.
I don't think it's restricted, it has bathrooms right there, see? Once there's bathrooms and there's a lobby like this, I would, I would prefer you guys put a a sofa over here, also a few chairs. Yeah, so I'm 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 gonna have to complain about that. Usually when I complain about something, they get it done. Being that I'm so important.
You are important.
All our citizens are equally important.
They are, that's why I said you're important. I believe you.
Oh, ten, huh, that you were.
Are you ready for the water or no?
No, no, not yet, I still got, I still got seven and a half minutes.
How many minutes do you have left? Seven and a half?
Yeah, yeah, see, it's uh.
Well, how many did you start with?
Uh, well, I ca- I've been here twenty-two minutes. You you didn't know that?
You gotta be here thirty minutes?
Ah, yeah, yeah, and then, and then I I leave because I'm an agent for the US Constitution. Wow, a public cafeteria.
Uh huh, this is a cafeteria.
Then what is it?
It's a welcome center.
Oh, do you have a cafeteria here?
No, we don't, you know, we, you know, we're a school district?
Yes, yes, I just found out.
Yeah, we're a school district.
Walking in. I just found out that this is a, this is a school?
Well, no, it's a school district, we have schools.
Oh, the Board of Education.
Yes, it's the Board of Education, and so this is our welcome center where we welcome our visitors and parents when they're registering people.
And everybody is welcome according to these flags?
Well, yeah, look at those words. Look at, over there, all different.
Bienvenidos. Okay, other languages and stuff like that, wow, I I have to take a picture of this.
It's a pretty nice wall, isn't it, actually? I do like the different languages.
Hey, I don't have to go to the front to get a water? There's water here.
It's probably warm, though, I had cold water for you.
Oh, oh, yeah, old folks like me, I'm sixty years old, so cold water makes my teeth hurt. Yeah, so when you reach sixty, it's kinda like a lot of things expired, you know, at the age of sixty.
And your teeth?
You you could be, you could be fifty-nine and you'll be alright, but once you hit sixty.
Things change.
Things change. And look at that. Okay. Oh, they have a screen TV here.
Yeah, I'm not really sure what they do with that, though.
Oh, it's a, it's a less than an inch thick.
Yeah, probably, I don't know what they do, actually, I just know they meet families in here, whether it's book bags and tables for like little kids.
What a great place.
Yeah, if we wanna make it kid-friendly, because remember, we're a school district, right?
You guys are the greatest.
See all the different flag?
Yeah, but one of them is my favorite.
Which one?
Well, for some reason, it's not here. Maybe.
Which one is your favorite, though?
The Puerto Rican flag. And right now, you got the Cuban flag, you got the Haiti flag, you got uh the Italian flag, the Jamaican flag, but no Puerto Rican flag. Yeah, this is not a Puerto Rican flag, this right here is a Cuban flag. You know, I'm very disappointed that you leave my people out of this, knowing that we're Americans like the African-Americans. So no flag here for the Puerto Rican, no wonder they're trying to get me out.
No.
I think they're the conspiracy.
No, I think that's an oversight, honestly.
I don't know, but.
There's only so many flags. Right, I know, there's only so many that can go up there, but.
No, 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 no. I'm gonna have to protest about this.
No, I'm gonna let somebody know.
I am an activist, oh, the Dominican flag is here. Okay, so it doesn't matter uh what kind of citizen you are, doesn't matter where you come from, when you're here in the United States of America. You are our citizen. But except for me, according to these flags.
No, the flags.
Oh, wow, look at here, do you guys know what kind of flag is this?
I don't, tell me.
Ah, I know.
What is it?
Palestinian.
Is it?
Yes. The Palestinian flag is very similar to the Puerto Rican flag and the Cuban flag.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And then we got Japan here, we got.
See, I'm not very good with flags, if I'm being honest with you, so you're actually helping me, I didn't know we didn't have Puerto Rican flag over there.
No wonder they're trying to throw me out, there's no Puerto Rican flag here.
No, it's an oversight. That's why they said there's no Puerto Rican flag.
It's the one that's uh red, white, and blue.
That's so weird.
Looks like Captain America's.
I know, my daughter's a hundred percent Puerto Rican.
That's not right. Don't you guys know that Puerto Ricans are born Americans? When I was born, I was born American in Puerto Rico.
Yeah, you're American citizens.
I agree with you, I I think that has to be an oversight, honestly.
Well, to me, it doesn't really matter. What matters is that we're all here together.
Right.
In the United States of America, do you guys know what this flag is?
I.
One of my favorite people.
Yeah, it's, that one I do know, that one I know.
Ah, what is it?
Israel.
Israel.
Yes, right?
Well, it also represents the Jewish people.
Oh, yeah.
When I was a young man, I was into boxing and I seen like five savages beating up on two uh uh Orthodox Jews. And I ran over there and I started punching everybody and they 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 knew who I was, cuz I'm a Leaguer. And uh they knew who I was, so they backed off. And I said, why are you guys beating them? Cuz when we go to Brooklyn, they beat us up. Not these guys, these guys came to the Bronx Zoo. You know, so we got the Dominican flag, we got the Palestinian flag, we got, we got the Eng- oh, wow, look at this. It seems like I have three more minutes to go.
Okay, well, I mean.
Ah, so, so ladies and gentlemen, now it's time to say goodbye to all our company. No, I'm not gonna spell anything.
I was gonna say, are you gonna sing the Mickey Mouse, M-I-C-K-E-Y?
No, don't do that, cuz then they'll they'll ban my video.
Sorry.
Ah, she knows, she knows. Yeah, I I will never ever come here again. I will never ever come here again because uh I don't think there's a reason for me to come here. Everybody's okay, except for those two over there.
It's okay here.
Except for them, so I got two more minutes, okay, I'm gonna work my way out because I don't wanna violate the timing on the show. Hey, where did everybody go? Ladies and gentlemen. I don't know if these people know that these buildings don't belong to them, they belong to we the people. Well, Angela. Wow, another lobby. The restrooms are here, but there's indications on the restrooms going this way. Whoa, the police is here, oh, what happened?
Um.
What happened to the police?
No, but I can call you back and let you know. Oh?
The police were here, folks, but they left. Because it looks like the police noticed that it was a famous journalist here. And and uh. and uh.
If I turn around the truck.
Yeah, they're just leaving. They say, who's there? Uh, you described me and they say, yeah, I know the guy from TV. They're not interested.
Sir, I asked if I wasn't being filmed.
It's okay, it's okay. We love you and that's why we film you. It's actually a constitutional right of we the people to record in public. It's perfectly okay. And no one can stop me. Because although the law comes in here with muscles, my muscles are way bigger than the police officer's muscles. Because they're law enforcement, but I am the law. And there's nothing no one could do about it. So I want you guys to know that I'm sorry if I made you feel bad, but I want you to know is that I love you guys. I love all our public servants. So, goodbye.
Oh, that door sticks.
Oh, and uh, I, I prefer you guys put a sofa on that area over there near the bathroom. So that's the only complaint that I have. I'm not gonna expose her. Take care.
Bye, sir.
Hey, don't lock that door!